Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bales.
Here.
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Doer.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Here.
Mayor Stein.
Here. And I would like to turn it over for a moment to Councilmember Schwartz.
Y'all please stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you remain standing for just a moment. As many of you know, this upcoming week is election week, and so I would encourage, well, next week is election week, so I would encourage all of you to get out and vote. And I would encourage all of us to take a moment of silence or bow your heads in a silent prayer to encourage and to motivate all of those individuals who are running for office around our community. May they have the strength and perseverance to guide our community in the best way possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we working? All right, let's see if the mic is working yet here. We have an agenda before us. Any changes or corrections?
Who will approve the agenda, Your Honor?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approval of the minutes. First, we'll start off with October 11th, 2021, regular meeting. Any changes?
Who do approve as submitted?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from October 11th as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Extinctions. Motion carries. Next are the minutes from the October 18th work session meeting.
Who will approve the October 18th work session?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the October 18th work session. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Abstentions. That was me, wasn't it? Thank you. All right, so abstain. Prescheduled speaker. Boy, that didn't take long. He got right up there raring to go.
Good evening, mayors, members of city council. Tonight, we want to do...
Can we pause for a second? She's not getting audio for a second. Give her, can you give her a second here? So far, we haven't got audio out, and it's not going to be good on the recording.
When I'm on the roll.
Okay. All right, it's just not going. It may be audio. All right.
Pete, do you want to throw the presentation up there? Okay. We'll proceed.
Actually, I think you got a mic working too there.
Does my mic work? I don't know. Okay.
We're getting, I'm seeing levels, which is for some reason the speaker is not working. So I'm seeing level, so it's hot. It's hitting hard, so don't do that.
All right, don't do that.
Begin. Okay. I just want to, again, this presentation is a little bit about financial strategy for the city. Again, I want to just give you some brief history of where we've started and where we've been and the success story and what's going to happen pretty much next on our financial strategy. So our first financial strategy, the number one, was stabilizing the city's current revenue sources, which was all of our levies. And that was established four or five years ago. And in the process, we have gone through and made all of our levies continuous. So again, we were successful in completing that. The last one we did was the 3.4 mil street levy, and that one passed with a higher percentage than it's ever passed before. So again, we've accomplished number one, which was our long-term goal, was to get those $20 million worth of property taxes stabilized and secure. Again, with the concept that if we're putting a 4.5 mil police levy on it and we need to increase it by half, we're actually putting the entire levy at risk, the entire five mils versus just the half by not doing that process. So again, that's what our goal was. We accomplished that. So now, the next step is to generate funds to maintain and expand our current services, to diversify our revenue sources, increase our service levels based on population and the history of service levels increasing over the past years. And then again, developing the long-term plan to address our backlog of capital infrastructures that we've talked about for many years now that, again, remain unfunded and unobtainable at this point. So the theory is, is that, it's not really a theory, it's a fact, that we only have two avenues in which to increase revenue significantly. And one is a income tax, and the other one is the additional property taxes. So those are really our two main choices. And we took a look at those to determine what the options would be. And we looked at the income tax, and there were some favorable things that have occurred recently that kind of lead us in that direction, that it may be worth our while to attempt that again, and that would be our best option. So again, the November 2020 election, we completed that, and 48% of the residents were in favor of the income tax. That's a 10% increase over the last time we put that on the ballot, again, showing that we're getting closer to the point where the residents understand the income tax concept and how it meets our other goals and objectives. And we got relatively close to having that passed. The other thing is, the Beaver Creek Fair Funding Committee came before you, I think it was a month or two ago. And that committee is made up of residents of the city, and they've advocated for another attempt at the income tax and support that concept and are behind that idea. Then also, we did a statistically valid survey of the residents, and there was a slight majority of the residents that, again, would favor a 1% income tax. It was 45.6% versus those opposed, which was about 44%. Again, small number of difference there, but increasing as we went through the survey and actually educated folks about some of the concepts in the income tax tax code. After they learned a little bit more about it, they actually increased their recognition that 50.6% would actually bode for it. So again, those three things there are positive signs that maybe an income tax attempt would be the best option for the city. So again, with the Beaver Creek Fair Funding Committee and the city, we did take a sample of comments that we got after the election and realized that there were some important commonalities in the reason why they didn't vote for the income tax. And that was they didn't want to pay more taxes. It's a fundamental truth. Residents don't want to pay now for future capital improvements or potential savings. And the property tax reductions were not enough to offset the new tax. And the current residents who pay the new income tax, so again, those that work and live in Beaver Creek or live in Beaver Creek and work on the base, didn't see a significant benefit or increased services for the cost of the new tax. So based on that, those factors and some of that feedback, we went back to look at the income tax to determine what we could do to enhance some of the benefits that would derive from the next attempt at the income tax. Again, the goals for the income tax are pretty much the same. Again, we wanted to make sure that we distributed the funding for the infrastructure from residents and non-residents who are utilizing those services in our infrastructure. It makes sense. Diversifying the funding base between property tax and earned income. Again, most cities have a mixture between the two, and we believe that's a good way of funding the city by having a good balance between those two, not relying exclusively on property taxes. And then providing the residents with significant property tax relief now and in the future. Again, a goal which was what the income tax really was designed to do. Generate some additional revenue for increased municipal services. And then again, going back to funding that backlog of services and infrastructure projects that we just don't have the funds for under our current structure. So to achieve all those, again, we kept going back to the income tax as a viable option. And again, the foundation of the income tax is that every person or corporation earning or receiving income within the city would pay the income tax. It would, we would still propose a 1% income tax with 100% credit for those that residents paying income tax at other municipalities. And again, all the exemptions would be the same. Again, exempting retirement income, social security pensions, annuities, active military, and other tax-exempt income that were already in the tax code. And then, from there, what we decided was is that we needed some new provisions to address the, some of the comments that we received from the income tax about why they didn't vote for it. And what we came up with were these important new provisions of a income tax for the next attempt, which was rather than just letting the 3.4 mil street levy expire when it was finalized, that five-year term was over, we decided that we would go back and look at all of the levies that we had on the books and increase the number that we would terminate should the income tax be approved. And again, you see the five up there. It's 8.1 voted mileage, almost $7 million. And again, would provide relief for the taxpayer of $100,000, assessed value of $134. So again, about $50 more than what the original income tax proposal was. So again, upping the ante, again, going back to our objectives is to roll back more property taxes, which again, was one of the comments that we received. In addition, what we wanted to do was increase service. We've been talking about increasing service with the service levels, our population levels over the years, and have never been able to do that. And what we propose is that if the income tax goes back on the ballot, that we would write into the tax code that not only would we terminate those five tax levies that were depicted on the previous slide, but we'd also add essential services to the city itself. So again, we are looking at like five new public safety officers, police officers, and five new public service employees and public services. So again, we've been hearing from the police, again, for many years now that their actual level is way below the national standards and the surrounding standards. And again, with the population increases and the level of services increasing with our daytime population exploding when people are coming into work here, we thought that was the responsible thing to do. And also, the public service employees, again, we've had the same level of public service for many, many years. And you could see when we do have, especially in the snow plowing area where, again, we're without additional people out there. Again, it's just taking us longer and longer to get to all the plats and throughout the city. And again, a general need for folks out there to do the regular maintenance on the streets that just, again, with the increased usage, we just haven't been able to get to. So what we thought there was that, again, we would solidify that, sort of the service levels and actually put that into the tax code to promise the residents that if the income tax were to pass, we would terminate those five levies and also put in there that we will increase the service levels by this particular level right here. And then again, with the income tax, the way we've projected it out with the 1%, we would have some funds available to address that capital infrastructure backlog that we've had and we've been talking about for many years at this point. So in summary, basically, a new income tax initiative would, again, terminate those five property tax levies, which again, meets the goals of, again, balancing the income tax with the property taxes and significantly reducing the property tax burden of our residents. The current proposal with those additions and those new provisions would also provide that additional services. And we're guaranteeing that those services would be in place once the income tax was put into place. Also, that, again, the non-residents will be paying the majority of the income tax. Again, 75% of the people who are working in the city are non-residents. So again, those would be new folks that would be added to the income tax rolls. Again, we're still providing that 100% relief for those that are paying in other municipalities, still preserving all the credits for the retirement income, social security, the things that were already in the tax code. And basically, what we're saying is, is that by doing this, it meets all the goals and objectives that we had set for our long-term financial stability and also meeting some of the issues that folks had related to the last election. So we believe this addresses all of those issues. If the income tax were going to be placed on the ballot, we looked at a quick calendar about the fact that if we wanted to put it on the May election of 2022, here would be the timeframe. And the reason why we're bringing this presentation to you real quick is because of the lead time necessary to get it on the ballot. So again, we'd have to actually update the tax code and get that first and second reading in November, let the ordinance mature for the 30 days. And then in January, we'd actually have to do a resolution to place it on the ballot. So the timeframe when we got it pushed back said, we need to bring this to your attention right now. The other thing that we wanted to do was, while we're doing the resolution for the ballot language, we also wanted to put in a resolution that indicated that we were going to terminate those levies also. So put that into legislation to guarantee that, you know, that will happen and it's set in stone. So, and then with the election day on May 3rd for the upcoming income tax ballot language. Again, I'll just go into this relatively briefly. The income tax was the best option that we felt after reviewing everything and making all those other provisions. But in the event that that wasn't an alternative for us, again, our only option is to go back to the property tax rolls again, to fund our future operations and infrastructure needs. So when we looked at it, we started saying, well, if we did the income tax initiative and say that didn't pass or it wasn't an option, here's how the levies would stack up. And again, you see them coming right away. We have been, again, we've stabilized the tax levies, and we haven't increased them in a long time. And while operations have continued to increase, and as you're seeing right now, commodities are going through the roof, gas, salt, all those things are going to be increasing. And so when we did the projection of the funds for the next five to 10 years, what we realized was we need to come back with some additional property tax levies if we didn't go the income tax route. And there you're seeing the actual calendar that would need to be developed to actually get those levies on there to sustain our operations and our infrastructure. So, and again, I'll just say that even though you have four in the next two years, again, the cycle repeats itself. And again, it really, it won't address the $200 million that we've also indicated out there that is really unfunded. Infrastructure that's on our capital improvement program that just is still unfunded. So just wanted to present that to you as the alternative. Again, there's other revenue sources out there, they're not significant. But again, you could be looking at, considering a stormwater utility or curb or sidewalk assessment as part of the alternate revenue sources other than the income tax and property taxes. So that's the extent of our reach as far as what we could do and generate some revenue for the city now and in the future. So I just wanted to present this to you, go through the options. And again, consider that whether or not, if we're going to do the income tax, that timeframe is on a relatively short calendar. And you would have to almost bring that forward at the next meeting for the first reading, so. Be happy to answer any questions or address any comments that you might have.
Anyone?
I have one question. Bill, first of all, good presentation. I'm a big proponent of an alternate funding operation. I had a question, and I'm sorry I didn't bring it up last time we talked about it. With the five new employees written into the tax code, in the event of a economic downturn, how does that affect us? How are we going to address that issue in the future?
The bottom line is, is that once it's in there, we would have to fund it. So again, whether or not you'd have to take alternative actions, maybe using some of your fund balance, maybe reducing the minimums down until that funding picked back up. So again, you're right, if, you know, unemployment tripled or something in the year that you placed the income tax in there, and we didn't meet our goals, but I'll tell you, the goals are fairly conservative to begin with, then you would have to support that. And again, that would be one of the options.
So is the, is the language going to state a minimum number of employees in the police department? Or the addition of five?
Right now, the way it's drafted would be that it would be the five right now. So again, if the income tax was passed and it started in 2023, those five would be in there. Now, again, you could, you know, it takes us quite a while to get some folks in here to begin with. So again, you would start that process in 2023. And again, good point, we would just have to make an adjustment someplace else or find another alternative revenue, look at fees and other charges that maybe we could increase to tide that, that program over.
Anyone else?
Bill, thank you, as always. It's well done. And I'm sure we'll be hearing more in the very, very near future.
Right. Thank you.
Next are the ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. First is Ordinance 21-22.
Ordinance number 21-22 to approve supplemental appropriations and certify additional revenue for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2021 and ending December 31, 2021, and to amend ordinances 21-14, 21-09, 21-06, and 20-33.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. So the ordinance before you has three vegetarian items for your consideration. The first item is for the Beaver Creek Senior Center. The center received a coronavirus relief funds grant through Adult Day Service and Senior Center Provider Relief related to nutrition support through the Department of Aging. The Senior Center was granted $4,400, which will go towards the purchase of equipment for nutrition services, including a supply of shelf-stable meals, water filtration systems, a coffee maker, popcorn maker, as well as other miscellaneous kitchen items, appliances. In order to receive and expend these funds for their intended purpose, the city must certify revenue and appropriations for these eligible expenses in the amount of $4,400. Secondly, the golf course lease for the existing golf carts is expired, is expiring at the end of 2021. In early October, the golf cart, the golf course put the carts out to bid for another four-year lease. The bid has been awarded with expected delivery of the carts in time for the 2022 season. The total cost of the lease must be certified as revenue and appropriated in the amount of $422,390. The trade-in value of $180,000 will be posted to sale of assets. So after offsetting the trade-in amount, the total, the remaining total of $242,390 will be financed with a municipal tax-exempt lease. And then finally, the city's been having ongoing problems with the phone and data speed at the golf course clubhouse despite repeated attempts to increase the cable capacity through our existing vendor. A strategy was developed to address this critical issue by extending the city's own fiber network, which currently terminates at Lilian Lane on New Germany Trebein Road. The cost of extending the city's line to the clubhouse will be approximately $70,000 and will need to be bid out. In order to fund this project, the city will be utilizing funds that were budgeted in 2021 for the city hall security project that came in under budget. Therefore, no additional appropriations are required, just simply a shift of funds from one project to another. Although there is a cost associated with this project, the city will no longer need service from an outside vendor and thus will generate monthly savings while correcting this critical issue. So staff recommends adoption of Ordinance 21-22.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
All right. This is a single reading, but it is the first reading, so it is also a public hearing. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address counsel on this ordinance? Seeing none, we will close public input. And any comments or questions? All right. Something's starting to work. Somebody woke up.
Your Honor, I motion to approve Ordinance 21-22.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second to approve Ordinance 21-22. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bales.
Yes.
Councilmember Curran.
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Doer.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
And Mayor Stein.
Yes. All right, next, Ordinance 21-23.
Ordinance number 21-23. An ordinance by Beaver Creek City Council repealing the current Chapter 98, registration of abandoned foreclosures and vacant properties of the codified ordinances of the city of Beaver Creek, and enacting a new Chapter 98, registration of abandoned foreclosures and vacant properties to the codified ordinances of the city of Beaver Creek.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Council, again, as the clerk read out, this is a proposed, well, this ordinance proposes to repeal existing Chapter 98 and replace it with some language that kind of softens 98 in terms of the requirements of us to enforce it. Now, it's a, it's a good section of the code. It comes in real handy on vacant properties. But there is, the language in there is strong in that if someone is considered vacant and has a violation, it says the city shall issue or require them to register as a vacant property. And we're proposing to change that down to it may require. So that there are going to be instances where it's not appropriate to require someone to register. Say somebody goes to Florida for the winter and, you know, a tree branch falls in the driveway they don't know about technically, that's a violation. And we don't want to require every instance of that to have, every property owner have to require, register with the city that they're a vacant property for the next three months or six months. There's no timeframe. So in order to prevent kind of an overburden on the residents and the city, you were proposing to soften that language and give us the opportunity, staff the ability to use some discretion on when this should be applied or not.
Questions? Anyone? This is, again, the first, first reading of this ordinance. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address counsel on this application? Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address counsel on this application? Seeing none, we will move forward. But any comments here?
May I ask one question? I'm sorry. Do we let mortgage companies know of our process?
I mean, they shouldn't, I mean, it's, if it's a problem, if we find it's a problem, then we'll let them know of our process, but there's, there's no announcement, general announcement of our process for all vacant properties.
Do you know about how many vacant properties we've registered? Last year or whatever?
I recall in the 60s, around 60-ish, give or take.
I think a vacant property registration ordinance like this is important, you know?
Well, certainly, and, you know, it's come in handy a lot. I mean, the intent of it is really if there's a foreclosed home and we know it's bank-owned and not, you know, local resident or, you know, rental property or anything like that, we know that it's bank-owned, we want to have that contact information with the mortgage company because more likely than an average property, they have the code enforcement violations because there's not somebody there mowing it or things like that.
Makes sense. Thanks, sir.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion to move ordinance 21-23 on to the second reading?
Your honor, I move ordinance 21-23 moved to the second reading.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 21-23 on to the second reading. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is resolution 21-42.
Resolution number 21-42, a resolution affirming all funds from the American Rescue Plan Act 2021 be expended only to cover the costs of the city consistent with the requirements of Section 603(c)(1) of the Act, and to designate use of the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds authorized by the American Rescue Plan Act and received by the city of Beaver Creek.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So after passage of House Bill 168, cities, villages, and townships with populations under 50,000 became eligible to receive part of the $130 million for coronavirus relief as part of the American Rescue Plan Act. Excuse me. As a result of this legislation, the city was approved for $5,920,000 in federal COVID-19 rescue funds. These funds are to be used to mitigate the costs associated with the public health emergency and its negative economic impact. Half the funds are available this year, and then we are slated to receive the second half in 2020. The city calculated revenue losses directly related to COVID and developed a strategic plan to allocate these funds based on U.S. Treasury guidelines. The city's plan is to use approximately 92% for infrastructure projects and then the remaining 8% on capital projects. When developing the city's strategic plan for these funds, the city focused on one-time funding of long-term, multi-year projects that have a high impact and that specifically have little or no funding sources. Slated projects include water and sewer, stormwater, and infrastructure projects that are part of the backlog of projects that are on the city's unfunded long-term capital improvement list, as well as capital slated for public safety and communications. Although these funds are, though these federal funds are critical for addressing some of the backlog of infrastructure projects, the impact of these funds will address only a small percentage of the backlog of the city's unfunded infrastructure projects. Even though the city has identified a number of projects and estimated costs of these projects, final use of these funds will be dictated by the actual cost and priority of each project. U.S. Treasury guidelines stipulate that these funds must be expended or encumbered by December 31 of 2024, with all expenditures being finalized by December 31 of 2026. Therefore, staff recommends adoption of resolution 21-44.
Thank you. Comments? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve resolution 21-42.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 21-42. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is resolution 21-43.
Resolution number 21-43, a resolution to authorize the submittal of the Grange Hall Road at I-675 interchange project for prioritization through the Dayton Regional Property Development and Advocacy Committee.
Thank you.
Yes, again, the mayor, members of city council. Staff was recently informed by the, that the Dayton Development Coalition will be accepting applications through the PDAC process. The PDAC process is not like a traditional grant process. It's more where the Dayton Development Coalition will take locally important projects and will rank those, and will provide those lists to our elected representatives in Washington and in Columbus for possible funding opportunities. The project that we're recommending that we submit is one that we've done over the past several years, is the, the funding needed to do the initial studies to improve the interchange at Grange Hall Road and I-675 from a half interchange to a full interchange. The request would be for the $500,000, which would be the initial studies needed for the state, for ODOT to sign off on the approved design so it can progress in the overall process to improve that interchange. And again, we've submitted this through PDAC in the past several times, and we also have made efforts to reach out to, I believe, Senator Brown and Congressman Turner to, for their assistance to help get funding in the new transportation bill also. But again, I think it's important to, again, submit a new application to keep everybody's eyes on this project. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions? You've got to keep grinding it.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Your honor, I move resolution 21-43.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 21-43. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Next is resolution 21-44.
Resolution number 21-44, a resolution authorizing the city manager to award a golf cart bid to Lake Erie Golf Cars and to enter into a tax-exempt municipal lease financing with Huntington Bank to finance the purchase.
Thank you. Bill, it's just your lucky day.
I know. I threw Teresa in there a couple of times just so you didn't have to see me all night. Just what Debbie said, yes, that's what we're here for. The last time we rented and leased golf carts was 2018, and we went for a four-year lease. We normally had a five-year. We've started collapsing those because what we realized was the warranties on the batteries and things were getting shorter and shorter. So we were at the end of our useful life of the carts, and now what we're seeing now is that the cart batteries, like any other cart, after you buy it new, is after it gets out of the warranty period, things start to fail. And again, that's what's happening with the batteries, and we anticipated that. So Steve and his crew went out and looked at the different variations of the golf carts, and basically you have electric or gas. And what they realized was that the gas carts will be about 20% cheaper than electric carts, and they did an analysis of what also, any other savings that you would get operationally by switching from the electric to the gas. And what they realized was is that the electric carts, they, it takes about $25,000 for us to charge them with electricity over the year, and with gas carts, even with the increased price in gases, it would be about $20,000. So again, there might be a savings of about $5,000 there just operationally. And, but the key thing is, is that with the current golf carts in our terrain at our golf course, it's not flat, it's very hilly, it's a real strain on those batteries. We can get probably like two rounds of golf out of those carts before they have to be brought back in and fully charged again. With the gas, there's a five-gallon tank on there, and the bottom line is, is that they usually get 30 miles to the gallon, so what they're thinking is, is that they can get 18 rounds of golf in the gas carts without having to fill up the gas tank. So again, you can see where the savings and the more efficient operation with the gas operation would be to go that direction. We did have to switch over, so again, you're going from the charging systems inside the barn to an outside gas configuration with a pad and the electric and everything like that, and they still realized that, that still is a potential savings long-term for the, another four-year lease. Again, we're sticking with the four years, and basically that is, the reason for that is just the warranty. When we put it out to bid, basically it's for four years. So again, we realized that those carts take a pretty good beating over four years, and at that point, it's probably time to get a, a new set of leased vehicles. The other thing, when we looked at that, we realized we were probably saving about $20,000 a year in the, the monthly and annual fee for the lease. So again, we were saving some money there, and what they decided to do was to add a GPS unit to the golf cart. Again, it's fairly standard with most golf carts and most courses that you go to, even municipal courses, and we had them a while ago. We scaled them back to save some money, but again, with all these savings and all that additional, you know, infrastructure that we don't need, as far as the charges go and things like that, we thought it would be good to bring those back. And again, it's a desired commodity for the golfers out there. So again, for those that don't know, the GPS, it, you pull up, it tells you how far you are from the hole, takes the guesswork all out of the, you know, measuring it out and stepping it out with your feet, and the bottom line is, is that they wanted to add that back in. So with those savings, we added that feature back in, and not only that, we went from 72 carts to 80. Again, we're seeing a lot of increased usage out there, and we thought that the eight additional carts would be a tremendous help for us to, again, get more rounds at the golf course at this point. So also, the bid included six utility vehicles, pretty much gators and things like that, and then a brand-new beverage cart. So the old utility vehicles, we normally throw those on gov deals, we don't trade those in because we get more value on those on the open market than we do with the trade-in. But the other good thing about it was that they gave us a pretty good rate on the trade-in because, again, they hadn't been past that four years yet. So again, we got kind of a premium trade-in to do this at this particular point. Now, like everything else that's going on, the production is an issue, getting the carts, getting the parts, getting everything ready to go. So what we need to do is, even though we know we won't even get these carts till next year, we have to actually do the appeal and encumber the funds right now in order to issue the contract to get it into the production line process. And also, this vendor that we selected, the lowest-priced vendor, also provided us an option that said in the event that some of our batteries start wearing out, and if they have vehicles in their stock right now, new vehicles, that they'll give those to us before they deliver the entire fleet. So again, kind of accommodating us for realizing that those batteries are going to start failing here pretty quickly. So that explains the bid process, why they switched. The other thing is that we always finance these carts for the four years. And again, we put that out to bid also. We asked the vendor if they had a financing program. We asked a couple of our local banks, and we did get one with Huntington Bank for 2.09%. Again, the caveat there is that the 2.49 normally, and when I wrote this, I didn't negotiate with them at that point, but as we realized, the carts won't be here and they won't fund the financing till the carts arrive. So what we did was, realizing that interest rates are probably going to go up, we locked into this rate, and we have to pay a small escrow fee to do that early, but it locks into that rate. So again, if we don't get the carts till March or May, we've got the funding locked in, and then the amount will be financed from the escrow when the carts actually arrive. So with that, all that being said, we are recommending that the council adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Lake Erie Golf Carts, which is easy-go golf carts, and then authorizing him to enter into a tax-exempt municipal financing with Huntington Bank. So be happy to answer any questions you may have. I also have my cart expert in the back if you ask questions that are beyond my capabilities.
All right, Bill, thanks.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to express that we, we did look into the, you know, the gas, you know, one of the changes, this is new for the golf course, and one of my concerns was the noise, and, but technology, like anything else, has greatly improved them, and it really came to light the need for gas and the power. If anybody's been to our golf course and played on our golf course, you're very familiar that it's not a flat golf course, very many hills. The gas power was significantly better. During COVID, we had to rent additional carts because we had limited capacity back when the public health had us one person per cart, so we had to rent quite a few carts, which really helped us. But it made us realize, number one, they were all gas carts that we rented, the power was great, the longevity of it, all those other issues that really made us realize when we were ready to go out for bid that gas carts may be a great option for us. So I wanted to share that, that's why we did look at that, we did, you know, the noise, the volume, I don't think anybody living around the golf course has anything to fear with the noise level. This isn't a go-kart or a lawnmower or anything like that going, so it should be quiet and more powerful. That will help get, get safely up, up the hills as needed.
Good point.
Thank you. The golf carts are in terrible condition.
They are.
And absolutely need replaced. One thing I wanted to let everybody know is that the golf carts are also paid by the users, right? So every round of golf that people play, they pay a user fee that pays for the golf carts as well. So I think that's important. I'm glad you did the financial analysis on the difference between the electric and the gas golf carts, but I will say it's not the greenest initiative in the world. And so perhaps in the next four years, you could at least do the evaluation again because technology does improve all the time, and I think that it was, it struck me as just kind of weird that we were going from electric to gas when the rest of the world's going from gas to electric.
Right.
But I totally support this.
No, again, that's a good point, and again, every time we go out for another leasing opportunity, we'll be looking at the whole plethora of technology that's available at that point, but, yeah, we'll do that same analysis.
I think the other thing, too, is those GPS units will potentially increase pace of play because people will know where they are, and they will also keep people off of certain areas of the course that we don't want carts because you can program them to do that type of thing, and that will be very beneficial. So, thanks, Bill.
I have one quick question. I, I think the, the green initiative is a valid point, but I'm really glad to see the gas because those carts don't work too well on those hills. But the question I have is, we'll have to have a gas tank to fill those. Where is that going to be?
It's right when you go in to drop off the carts, it's going to be staged right there.
So we're actually having it in the building?
So, yeah, again, they've already built the, built the pad and everything's right there. And again, the bigger question was how are they going to fill it, and they've already worked that out. So again, it'll be right there when you drop off your carts, right before you go into the barn where they can gas them up and then put them in there.
I guess my question, kind of, at other golf courses I've seen, that gas tank is usually off away from the clubhouse, and I'm just, from a safety standpoint, that's all I'm looking at.
It's separated, I'm not sure exactly how far, but it is separated from the actual building itself, and it is in that, sort of like that pit there. So again, you don't see it from the top or anything like that.
Yeah, aesthetics is a big issue, too.
But that's the best we could do, other than, again, we already have the gas tank down at the maintenance facility, but again, the, the theory of, you know, gassing it up down there when you're dropping it off over here, you know, they, they kind of looked at that and said this would be the most efficient way of doing it.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
And again, it's going to meet all the standards and requirements related to, you know, the pad and the safety and...
Anyone else?
Please, Mayor. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Casera. As a technical question, will each hole start with a GPS flyover of, of each hole to give the players a sense of where they're going, what they're doing?
I didn't see the GPS myself. I don't know. Nobody really knows. I mean... I mean, normally, it's a diagram. You see of the hole, and then as you drive, it tells you how close you're getting to the hole. So again, I don't know if it'll have the graphics of zooming in and showing you where the bunkers are in relation to, but I think that's the whole concept, is that it goes with you. And then from there, you can see the lay of the land on that particular hole.
It's a nice concept that I've seen elsewhere. So it's one to consider if it's within a reasonable price range. And then second, simply, you know, around hole eight, 17, just marketing for the shop, food afterwards, things of that nature, because the golf club is really beginning to do very well in those areas. So just to push the marketing, call ahead, get a hamburger, et cetera.
And then that's already been discussed, and that was one of the selling points of that, was that if you're approaching, you could say, you know, head here to order ahead or call this number. And again, that was already kind of a selling point for that system.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 21-44.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 21-44. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is Resolution 21-45.
Resolution 21-45, a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council imposing a moratorium of six months on the operation of shared mobility device services, including the placement or operation thereof in any place or any public right-of-way or on public property, and offering the same for use anywhere in the city.
All right, thank you. And I think, Pete, you want to start off on this?
Yes, before I turn it over to Mr. McHugh, our legal attorney, you know, basically, this is a resolution that puts a moratorium on what we call shared mobility devices, which are from the scooters, you know, this is, this has nothing to do with an individual who owns a scooter. This has to do with a company coming and having 200 scooters that they want to drop off. And, you know, we felt that before this would start happening, Beaver Creek's the second-largest city in landmass and where we don't have appropriate sidewalks that are, you know, not connected. We don't have a downtown. Many aspects of the city of Beaver Creek that other cities, such as Dayton, such as, you know, many other cities that have downtowns and contiguous streets, we don't have that. So this is simply as a moratorium, gives us a six-month to look at whether or not this is something that council does want to have or to limit or to totally ban. You know, there's a whole bunch of choices that can be made with that. But it gives us the time to put this in place before we, you know, they start showing up and then we haven't banned them and their so-called grandfathered in or something of that nature. Steve, did you have any more?
No, I think that's a good summary of it. It does, it does give us time to give council an opportunity to look at this whole issue, you know, on how we would regulate these vehicles, shall we say, or these things, if council were to determine. One of the things we also have to consider is, you know, things like our ordinances on riding on sidewalks because we allow certain things that other communities wouldn't, which arguably, some of these things could be ridden on sidewalks, yet they have a pretty high speed. So there's intertwined issues that I think need to be looked at before these were to be turned loose with respect in the city. So, but as Mantra stated, these are, these are not the individual, these are more the corporate programs that have both the shared, the scooters, the bicycles, things of that nature. So.
Thank you. Any comments? Do I see a motion?
Your Honor, Motion 21-45, motion on shared mobility devices, motion to be approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 21-45. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Moving right along, liquor permits.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. This is not going to be as exciting as the GPS on the golf carts. I have two liquor permits this evening. Both of them are stockholder changes, and they both involve different locations for Speedway. The first one is located at 2254 North Fairfield Road. The Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control, sent notification to us regarding the stockholder change of a C2 and a C2X liquor permit for Speedway doing business at 2254 North Fairfield Road. We completed all the required record checks by the Department of Commerce and Division of Liquor Control, and those checks were done on the applicants and the stockholders that were being added to this and changed. And our recommendation for this location is the application request move forward without comment.
Thank you.
Motion to accept with that comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. You're up again there, Chief.
All right. And the next one is for basically the same thing. The location this time is at 3991 Indian Ripple Road. And the request there is for a stockholder change regarding a C1, C2, and D6 liquor permit for that location at 3991 Indian Ripple Road. And again, we received the information from the Department of, Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control, and we conducted the applicant stockholder checks for this request. And again, we are recommending this application request move forward without comment.
Motion to accept with that comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Decision items. I think Councilmember Bales is on the hot seat right now.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As requested in the past, the upcoming Ohio Parks Conference is coming up, February 6th through the 9th. And you've approved my attendance the last couple of years, although last year's conference was canceled due to COVID. I am requesting that we utilize some of the money that we already have budgeted for me to attend this year. The reason I ask now is because their early bird registration process ends November 12th, and the registration fees $295, and the hotel fees are $124 a night. And I would, again, like to attend on behalf of council.
Thank you. Anyone?
Move the approved Councilmember Bales conference.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the request to attend the OPRA conference. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Council time. Charles, you look right up as soon as I say that.
Well, really, it was a lot of fun. It was a lot of fun on Saturday with the tree giveaway. We had wonderful participation by all of the organizations that were involved, and a special thanks to all the volunteers that came out. Let's see, Vice Mayor Adams can correct me here. I think we had like 450 trees. Was that what the number was?
460.
I think somewhere around 220-plus cars, and we still had some trees left over, but we got rid of those. And it's just a great thing, Your Honor and council. I hope we can do it again next year. So it was really fun to be a part of that. Secondly, just a reminder, senior citizens have a Halloween party Thursday at noon till about 1:30. So we want to encourage seniors or whoever wants to come out to the party, it'll be over at the Senior Citizen Center. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. And as I mentioned earlier, November 2nd is Election Day, so I encourage everyone to get out and vote if you haven't done so already. To echo what Councilmember Kern said, as a reminder, Halloween is the 31st. We do our trick-or-treat here in Beaver Creek from 6:00 to 8:00. So I encourage all of our kids to participate and also just keep an eye out and make sure that you are looking around. We have some young ones that are going to be out on the street, so just exercise some caution. Last and certainly not least, the Beaver Creek Optimist Club is doing a broomstick bash from 5:00 to 7:00 on Wednesday. And that's going to be at the Dominic Laffino Plaza or Park. And so I encourage everyone to get out. There's going to be a lot of activities for the kids. That includes the bookmobile, a chemistry demonstration. So I encourage everyone to get out and see what all there is to offer. And last, I am going to add one more thing. I apologize for my appearance, but I was actually out in Washington, DC. My flight was delayed because I got to spend the weekend with my goddaughter, which was just such a great thing. I haven't seen her for over a year and a half. So, so excited that we got to have that time together.
That's great.
That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Bales.
Oh, thank you. Well, let's see, we've talked about the tree giveaway. I would like also to echo everyone to get out and exercise your right to vote on November 2nd. We have heard some very compelling reasons to consider Issue 1 regarding the jail, as well as Issue 2 that take care of all of our bridges throughout the county. So I would like to encourage people to support those two initiatives, and of course, do your research on all the candidates. The last thing I'll say is, I had the pleasure last week on behalf of the Rotary Club to deliver coloring books to every second grader at Maine Elementary and dictionaries to every third grader at Maine Elementary. And it was an amazing experience, the looks on their faces when they get their own books for them to keep and use was fantastic. And so I was just happy to do that public service for Rotary Club. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Councilmember Dewar.
Thank you, Mayor. Residing in the area hit by the tornado, it was wonderful to see so many new trees and shrubs, et cetera, in and around my neighborhood and those in adjacent areas. So a big thank you in that area of the city in particular. Had an opportunity to attend an HOA meeting with the crossings at Canterbury Trails. Wonderful to get into the community and to chat with people and to try and solve some local issues. Councilmember Garcia's had a wonderful initiative getting into HOAs, and it's a pleasure to attend. But for those that are not in HOAs, please send us an email. Always great to meet residents and have the opportunity to solve some things on the ground. I think it's why we all serve, is that opportunity to do something tangible, if possible. There's no magic wand. Third, I would like to thank Iron Gate Realtors for hosting the Chamber of Commerce event this past week. Many of us were in attendance, but it's wonderful to chat with new business owners and existing business owners. And it was a packed house. It was a really wonderful event. And to echo Councilmember Schwartz, please get out and vote on November 2nd if you haven't done so already, like Councilmember Bales said, a number of important issues on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. I would first like to congratulate, congratulate the Beaver Creek Women's League on another successful scholarship luncheon. They weren't able to have it last year. The date was changed a few times, but beautiful luncheon just a few weeks ago and honoring two women, one for a woman in transition, someone who is not your traditional college student, going back to college after having another career or another lifestyle, and also a recent high school graduate. So really great to see both of those women at the event, and congratulations again to the Beaver Creek Women's League for putting that on. It was already mentioned, but thank you to all of the volunteers who helped hand out those 450 trees we had over the weekend. Being a Tree City USA, I know that's really big for us, so that's great that we had that for our residents. And also had the opportunity to attend the Fall Freedom Fest just last week. Vice Mayor Adams was there with me as well, as well as Councilmember Kern, so it was really nice to see a number of leaders in the community from all across Greene County, as well as some from across the state. So thank you again for all of the participation in our community. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a busy two weeks. I got to attend two ribbon cuttings, one for the Phase 1 of the Beaver Creek Wetlands Spotted Turtle Trail. That was a lot of fun. They've really done a nice job out there with their wetlands, and I'm really looking forward to Phase 2 being completed soon. I don't think I'll see it all completed, all the way up to the other side of Fairborn, but, you know, at least they're working on that. I also attended a ribbon cutting for the new West Banko location on North Fairfield. And I really want to thank West Banko for staying in Beaver Creek when they moved and building a really nice-looking building there on North Fairfield. It's a really nice place to go. I also spent some time unloading trees and distributing to the citizens. That was, you know, that whole thing was sponsored by the Arbor Day Foundation, State Farm, City of Beaver Creek, and Beaver Creek Township. So it was, it was nice to see all those trees and the smiles on people's faces when they got them. And I talked to a lot of those people as they were coming in, and, you know, some of the lost, devastated by trees, you know, 20, 30, 40 trees in their yards were just disappeared. As Councilwoman Garcia said, I attended the Fall Freedom Fest. List a great speaker, former Lieutenant Colonel of the Space Force, gave a really nice talk. On a fun thing, this past weekend, I was able to attend two trunk-or-treat events. Actually, was the guy that had McGruff the Crime Dog. And so that was kind of fun, having the kids come up and take pictures of that. We did one at Beaver Creek Christian Church. And then we did the one that the Lions Club sponsored at the high school. And I was honored to be a judge along with Commissioner Rick Peralis to pick the best trunk design and the best costume. And the best group went to a Beaver Creek High School group that's part of the Bright Star Project. And I was really glad that we could give it to them because these are a bunch of kids that work with other at-risk kids for suicide. It's really, it's a tough thing in our community, in all our communities, suicide amongst teenagers. And it's really good to see a bunch of other kids working together to help their fellow students through that whole process. So that's all I have for now.
Thank you. I think Councilmember Bales has little addition.
Your Honor, of all this paperwork up here, I forgot the most important thing. And I apologize. But yes, I want to recognize some amazing public service employees that have given, quite frankly, years and years, if you collectively added up, lifetimes of service to the city of Beaver Creek. And so I'd like to take a minute to recognize Teresa Hathaway in our Finance Department for 12 years of service. I don't see her here any longer. Dan Kroll in Police Department for 20 years. Dave Majorsak in the Police Department for 20 years of service. Robert Eggleston, Eggle, excuse me, Eggleton in the Police Department for 14 years. Mark White in public service with 11 years. Jeff Mormon, our engineer, for 24 years of service. And Scott Skaggs in public service with two years. Summer LaPlante in Finance with two years. And then Chris Brownlee in the Police Department with nine years of service. Congratulations to all of them for working so hard on behalf of our citizens. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Next is Mayor's report, and it's going to be a short and sweet. I've kind of been under the weather here for a little while, and I want to thank council and staff for covering places that I was supposed to be. And you all did a great job taking care of things. And so let's see, you're going to continue doing that, right? But it, I'm feeling better, and so thank you all very much. And that said, let's turn it over to the city manager for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just so everybody is aware, the video equipment we have from the 1990s, early 90s, is failing. That is why we have, have been having technical difficulties. And last meeting was not recorded till the very end. We also had a long-term employee leave as well. So we're, we've got a couple things in the frying pan. We have new equipment that is on its way. It's, two-thirds is here. If you know anything about equipment, you can't just install two-thirds of the equipment. It has to be all or nothing. Probably the one-third is on a boat floating out in California. So we're not sure exactly when we will have that, but we are hoping soon before our equipment fails totally. But we're working on it. Tonight, just wanted to bring a couple things. The US 35 Super Street, this is kind of changing by the minute. It's all weather-dependent on what they can get done. But as you see, Sunday through Wednesday, October 24th through 27th, single lane restrictions on US 35 from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM each night for paving operations, as well as Thursday and Friday of October 28th, 29th, traffic placed into final configuration for the Super Street, and the loons opened to traffic. So new... So new signals will be activated at the intersections and loons. So the loons are the, you know, the U-turns area. So, so I just want to stand there and kind of watch at first and see, see how that goes.
They call those Looney Tunes.
Looney Tunes, is that what? Should be interesting, but we'll, we'll get used to them as, as we drive it. Laffino Senior Center, Thursday, October 28th, 12:00 to 1:30. The members only. Tickets $5. So they'll come out and enjoy the fun, as Councilmember Kern had said. So that'd be a good time. The seniors know how to party. I tell, I, no lie, they know how to party. Halloween is October 31st. That's, I did look at that. All Green County cities are on October 31st, as well as all Montgomery County cities, except for Trotwood, are on October 31st. So from 6:00 to 8:00. Be careful, as was said, bright colors, stay out of the street when possible, all those kinds of things. And please, who knows what the weather is like. It could be 80, far as we know in Ohio, but dress warm as needed. And coming up, this, we'll only have one more meeting, and we'll have more details before this. But keep on your calendar, November 11th, very important day, Veterans Day Ceremony. We know how to, thanks to park staff and the mayor, helps out tremendously with that, with this ceremony. It's always touching. So November, Thursday, November 11th, from 2:00 to 3:00 at the Fairfield, on Fairfield Road, the Veterans Memorial there. So please join us for that special event. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Now, what the whole audience has been waiting for all evening. It is now citizen comment time. So if there anyone tonight that would like to address council on any issue whatsoever, it's your time to do that. Please come forward and give us a name and address, and tell us what's on your mind.
Carol Graff, 1442 Devote Drive. This weekend, one of my sons came to visit. And since COVID, I've been walking, and he walked the neighborhoods with me. As we were walking, mentioned a property for sale, and he said, "Mother, there is no park in Cowman Woods or Audubon Park anywhere close in our neighborhood. And here's this property up for sale. Would the city at least look into acquiring it?" So that's what I'm asking you. I'm not going to give you the name of the property. I think Councilmember Schwartz, I emailed you, many of us know. But just keep it in mind, an adjacent property that could also someday be part of it. It would be a beautiful 11 to 20-acre park that is completely in the residential area and would be ideal. Just please think about it. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Anyone else? Don't be shy.
Don't be shy. Yeah, sure. Who called this meeting, anyway? Mark Batch, 1970 West Skyview Drive. I've got four people here tonight. Two from East Skyview Drive, three from West Skyview Drive. And I've been to the engineer several times on the issue. I don't think you would have the records better than I will, but I'm thinking our plazas have been blacktopped in the last 25 years. I took pictures of all the roads, all the cracks, all the grass coming through the cracks, the sinkhole. They just put a new tube across Morning View, and actually did pave it. I was surprised. The house on the corner of Morning View and East Skyview Drive, there was a fire. They used the fire hydrant on the street, across the street from the house, and blew the line. No idea why the line blew. I don't, I don't think that system's that old. I don't know how mu, I don't know what the year we got city water. But it seems strange that a line couldn't last more than 15 years, maybe? I would like to see the road, the roads on Morning View, East Skyview, West Skyview ground down and then repaved, because if you keep building it up, the mailman won't have enough arm length to put the mail in the mailbox. The other issue, major issue, which you guys talk about every year, is mosquitoes. We need the drain, the drainage regraded, because there's too many spots there that hold water so much. We're inundated with millions of mosquitoes. Have I covered it all?
Streetlights, no.
No?
What about streetlights?
Oh, yeah. On West Skyview and East Skyview is an horseshoe. I don't know if anybody's been there, but when you go around the hor, the tip of the horseshoe is pitch black. I mean, literally, if someone came around the corner, they would not see you walking, unless you had a flashlight or something like that. I understand that. But there was a light on the pole, but that's privately owned. That line was taken down, so that light no longer is on. It would be nice for the city to put a streetlight there. LED as bright as possible, so the cars have a chance to see you before they hit you.
All right. Well, what we, what you will get from us, and not tonight, though, with the city manager's been taking notes quietly over here, and you will get a response. And hopefully, things will go in a direction you would appreciate, but we will respond.
I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Did I see a hand?
I'd like to tell you about the streetlights.
You need to come up and give us a name and address, please.
After I pull up my drawers. I'm Lynda Learz. I live at 1925 West Skyview. I want to tell you about an experience I had because of not having streetlights, where you almost went into the ditch at Morning View, into someone's house. Me and my friend, she also lives in Skyview, and we're getting older. And we have issues with the dark, driving in the dark. I think when you hit about 60, down she goes. You can't see as good at night. I'm just saying, we need some damn streetlights. We need them bad. Now, there's a lot of new neighbors coming in, and they don't know about this, but I'm going to let them know, and we'll be getting a petition up. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else this evening?
Sorry to come by.
We try to only limit one, so make it very, very quick, please.
Okay. I heard tonight that you're going to put on gas golf carts on the, on the...
You broke it, you bought it.
Yeah. What's wrong with the battery-operated ones?
Current ones are totally worn out. I mean, it's a matter of...
Okay, what's worn out on them?
Just about everything.
Why not replace them with battery-operated ones?
That's what staff did their research on, and again, we don't get into this debate tonight. This is time for you to ask questions, and we'll get responses to you. But we're not going to get into back and forth. But if you want to know more about that, we'll be happy to provide some more information.
Okay. Thank you much.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we will move on. Next on the agenda is adjournment. Do I have a motion?
Move to adjourn, Your Honor.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.